585, which is consideration and acknowledgement of receipt of the Edmond Housing Assessment Plan. We have a lot of people in the room. I'm going to make the natural assumption that they're here for that, for this assessment plan. Even though this is not under, it's under general consent items, there will be an opportunity for people to make public comment. I would, we're going to do that in an orderly fashion, but I would ask the people who want to make comments that if you're hearing what you wanted to say over and over again up here, we've heard it. But today, what we're doing is receiving a document that the council has commissioned from experts to, and the process today is to receive that, because we can't do anything with it unless we receive it. And so that's what we're here. But we do have Kristi Batterson here today to give us an update.
I'm Kristi Batterson. I'm the Housing and Community Development Manager for the City of Edmond. It's my honor to present our document of the Housing Plan Assessment. The plan tells the story of our housing needs that are vital to our community. We have heard the saying, "Home is where the heart is," a basic necessity, a roof over one's head. Home is community. Edmond is community. Continuing to build a thriving community and creating a quality of life for all. So why was the Housing Needs Assessment recommended? It was recommended out of the 2018 Edmond Plan. Concerns raised by major employers such as Evan Public Schools, our major hospitals, and other workforce had issues related to the lack of housing, of recruiting employees. It was a city council strategic goal, and Edmond hasn't seen the same mix of housing development in most markets, and this is a long term, it has long-term implications. I'll touch on it in a few minutes, but over the last decade, 94% of our permits have been single-family. What are the Housing Needs Assessment, what are they going to do? It gauges our future demand for various types of housing in different contexts, everything from single housing to duplexes, triplexes, and up. Provides a better understanding of housing situations in certain major geographic areas of the community, and includes development of a comprehensive strategy to address housing needs in the community in the future. So a little bit about where we started. This has been about an eight, nine-month process. We started in November and kicked it off. During that time, we had data collection. Our consultant, the data collection, met with key stakeholders, conducting two surveys, four focus groups, and which all provided vital feedback about existing conditions and priorities. After that, we did some analysis. The consultant did some analysis. We continued meeting with those key stakeholders and focus groups to strategize, and we're finally here at this point of the report. A little bit about who participated in the assessment. One of the first things we did is we created a steering committee to help us in this process. It was a 13-member board representing a cross-section across the Edmond community. It brought expertise from housing development, real estate, Edmond Neighborhood Alliance representative, social services, education, finance, economic development, and the Fair Housing Council as well. Steering Committee members met throughout the assessment approximately four times over the course of the eight-month process, and they helped with staff prioritize the strategies that I'll be presenting here shortly. We also conducted stakeholder roundtables involving over 25 individuals, again, from diverse sets of perspectives of housing in Edmond, including developers, lenders, major employers, nonprofits, the school system, university staff, real estate agents, and more. Four focus groups were held around developers. There was a focus group on renters, dedicated renters, young professionals, providing the opportunities to discuss their specific challenges and inputs on ways to combat them. We had three press releases, one in January, March, and June, several newspaper articles, and three TV reports over the course of this project. Additional public outreach, we had a website that was dedicated on the city website to the housing assessment. Two online surveys were created to invite the community for their input. The Housing Needs Survey was the first one and had resulted in more than 1,700 responses. The second one was a Housing Preference Survey and resulted in more than 450 responses. Of those 2,100, a little over 2,100 responses, 93% of those respondents were inside Edmond city limits. Other outreach events included a pop-up booth at both the farmer's market and herd-on-herd in early April. And again, we had a dedicated website to include a kickoff video that one of our steering committee members provided as well. Just a little stats on that. Our webpage was viewed over 680 times between February and August. And over the course of the project, on average, across Facebook, Instagram, and Twitter, all the social media platforms, we had over 3,000 looks at our posts. And averages, we did about 23 social media posts over the course of putting information out about the survey, about the results of the survey, and how people can get involved. So what does that assessment show? There are six key themes, key findings out of the assessment. Edmond housing is unattainable for most. 64% of Edmond residents cannot afford the average new home price. And I'll remind you, the average new home price, one that is newly constructed, is over $400,000. The market is competitive. There are not enough units available today. I'll touch on that in just a few minutes. And the city's population is changing. We know that young professionals, young families, and empty nesters do not have a lot of options. Our early workforce, those that are 25 to 35-year-olds, cannot find an affordable home here in Edmond. And those that are aging population as well are wanting to age in place. They're not wanting to go into assisted living. They're wanting to age in their homes that they might have been living in, or they may need to downsize, and those homes are not available. The housing market is creating challenges for employers. Over 75% of the workforce commutes into Edmond to work. Housing challenges vary across the city. We do have an older housing stock. We have current programs that help with rehabilitation of those homes, but there are not enough funds to cover those costs. Edmond's market trends are unusual. Again, over the last decade, 94% have been single-family. Over the 10-year demand, it is estimated that we're going to need over 89 units. And when I say units, I mean roofs. It's not necessarily apartments. It's not necessarily single dwelling homes. It's a wide range, wide range of homes that are needed. We currently permit around 500 homes per year, so we would need an additional 400 per year to meet that projected 10-year goal. 40% of demand is for workforce housing. There is a demand in Edmond for housing of all types and prices, for sale and rent, diversifying the housing stock that will help meet this need. Over the next 10 years, new housing demand will be driven primarily by new development, as the city has a low for-sale and for-rent vacancy. And just to give you an idea, a teacher, and we're not a teacher who makes approximately $44,000 to $50,000 per year, all-in housing costs would only be $1,200 a month. That's an approximately, approximately a home that is for sale for $150,000. A nurse bringing an income of $84,000 a year with a household of four has a maximum rent or mortgage of $2,000. That approximate home price is $251,000. Edmond's economy is growing. We know that. The housing market is creating challenges for employers. We are growing at a faster rate than the Oklahoma City metro area, doubling as well as Oklahoma and even the United States. There is expected to be 38,000 jobs over the next few years. And again, 75% of all those workers employed in Edmond, those are your essential workers, your public servants, your teachers, your baristas, your servers, et cetera, commute from outside of Edmond into Edmond to work. Based on growth calculations, many essential jobs in Edmond will not pay a wage that aligns with the housing market. This map shows where our low-to-mod income individuals live. When I say low to mod income, that is 80% below area average median income. As you can see, it's in the core of our city, and this is also our CDBG area, which I've touched on before in previous conversations. This shows approximately the median home value across the United States, or sorry, United States, across the city. As you can see, the median house price right here, the average home price right here is approximately $192,000. Of course, our homes are, cost more to the north and to the east. So what have we learned? There's a broad support for more housing variety in Edmond. And again, that's all variety of housing, that's single-family, duplexes, on up. And substantial demand for more housing across all price points. Edmond needs 8,900 more homes over the next 10 years. Achieving this target will require a change in approach from everyone involved in the housing ecosystem. Again, currently, we permit around 500 a year, and we'll need an additional 400 a year. No single program addresses all the housing challenges facing Edmond. In response to these findings, Edmond Housing Assessment proposes strategies, policies, and tools that the city and their partners can use to help ensure housing options are available in the community for households of all types, ages, and all income levels. Out of the plan, there are six goals that meet the challenges. Increasing housing supply, create more attainable options for young families, create more options for aging in place and those who want to downsize, support affordable and moderate income housing options that support area businesses and institutions, improve the condition of older homes of the housing stock while preserving affordability, and expand support for all types of new construction, including multifamily. So out of the six housing goals, there are four strategies were created to provide the city with programs and policies. Of the four strategies, number one is to reduce the barriers to expanding production of all housing types for sale and for rent, diversifying types and price points of housing, facilitate the improvement of older housing stock condition while preserving affordability, and support employers' economy and workers through workforce housing. There's actually 20 priorities. That was my mistake there, but there's 20 priorities or tactics that are identified that will help us focus on community support and building capacity for future actions. The steering committee and staff discussed these 19 priorities and came up with five priority efforts that were identified through the housing needs with input that we will focus on first. One is to ensure the new zoning code will allow for more housing diversity. We have an ongoing zoning code update right now going on. We're in month nine of a two-year process. That should come before you next year. Form a housing task force. Establish a housing fund. Establish baseline of housing and neighborhood conditions. And create an education campaign. So these priority tactics, there's things that go under each one. Form a housing task force and establishing a housing fund, creating new staff. Right now, there's only myself and another person that handles all housing and community development items right now. To go after some more additional funding and other programming, we would need to add staff. Establish lists of baseline in housing neighborhood conditions. Use funding tools to help pay for infrastructure improvements. Streamline internal review and approval process, and of course, update our zoning code like I mentioned. There are other items, you know, in the four to five, four to five, seven-year range that we can build on once these first few tactics can be identified. My number-one goal is to establish a housing committee that will help prioritize and discuss and collaborate on the next tactics that we, you know, tackle. And then also to continue the current programming that we have, we do have federal funding that we use in our community development grant program that assists those in buying homes or rehabbing homes, as well as all, you know, all other things like ADA accessibility and such. At this time, I do have, the consultant is here, development strategies, as well as I have members of the steering committee that would like to come up and speak.
Thank you.
I think I'll call in the chamber first.
Hi, everybody. Good evening, council. My name is Kristin King, and I'm the Director of Operations at the Chamber of Commerce. On behalf of the Edmond Chamber, we would like to thank the city for their forward thinking with the housing issues that are addressing Edmond today. I am one of the many young professionals that lives outside of city limits, but I love Edmond. I work in Edmond, and I work every day to support the businesses of Edmond. And you'll get to hear from another young professional soon that'll talk a little bit more about some young professional mindset of that as well. Additionally, our chamber members are facing a workforce shortage that is increasing due to the shortage of attainable housing in our community. We hope that all the options will be explored in finding solutions to the problem of attainable housing. On behalf of the chamber, we appreciate the council for your time and service to the City of Edmond, and thank you very much for having us.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. My name is Savannah Whitehead. I am the Chairperson for Edmond Young Professionals, as well as the Program Director at Edmond Fine Arts Institute. First and foremost, I'd like to echo Kristin's thanks to the council for providing this assessment for us and for the city for pursuing this. Through the housing assessment, the city uncovered truths that Kristi spoke of, about 75% of young professionals ages 25 through 34 being unable to purchase a house of $430,000 in our community. Another fun fact that you guys have probably talked about recently is the fact that it took a decade for a multifamily project to be approved in the city limits. And then the fact that is less public but true nonetheless is that of the 12 members of our advisory board, only one of us lives and owns a home in the city. 12 of your most involved young professionals in this community, and only one of us owns a home here. All of these facts point to one root issue, that the citizens of Edmond at large are not properly seeing who in our community is in need of affordable and attainable housing. It's people like me, people like our schoolteachers at Integris, Mercy, and OU, our city's first responders, and recent UCO graduates entering the workforce, and so many more. Some of your most active and involved young people in our community, but we can't call Edmond home. I encourage any person that is opposed to the solutions to improve access to affordable and attainable housing to consider reframing who it is that you visualize needing these solutions. A person should not have to work in their career for 10-plus years and have a dual-income situation to live in our city. Thank you, council, and all of the city entities that have taken the task of tackling this issue. We want to continue to broaden the group of Edmond Young Professionals that call Edmond home and uphold the tagline that Edmond is a great place to grow. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, council. My name is Jenny Duncan. I'm a Realtor in Edmond, and I was a member of the steering committee. I was also asked to write the foreword for the report, which I am going to read right now. "We are thrilled to present the final report of the Edmond Housing Assessment, which encapsulates months of dedicated research, analysis, and community engagement. Our mission was to study Edmond's housing opportunities, understand its challenges, and develop strategies and policies to enhance the community's housing goals. With the support and collaboration of the city council, housing partners, and the community, we have achieved a comprehensive understanding of Edmond's housing landscape. The housing assessment aimed to ensure that suitable housing options are available in Edmond for all residences, regardless of their backgrounds, ages, and income levels. Our committee's research considered the conversations and concerns expressed by frontline workers, educators, healthcare professionals, and other vital occupations who face difficulties finding suitable housing in our city. We also recognize the ongoing debate surrounding rental housing, distribution, and the scarcity of available options in both the sale and rental markets. As someone who works day in and day out in the real estate and housing industry, I was not surprised by these results. I often hear stories about how difficult it can be to find housing in Edmond, especially at lower price points. In many cases, these individuals grew up in Edmond and are returning home, yet finding it a struggle to secure housing at a price they can't afford. We firmly believe that the recommendations within this report will empower the City of Edmond and its housing partners to make informed decisions about planning and investing in suitable housing for all residents. The strategies, policies, and tools outlined herein will equip decision-makers with the means to navigate the complexities of our housing landscape effectively. We extend our heartfelt gratitude to the city council, city staff, community members, and housing partners who actively participated in this process. Your contributions, insights, and unwavering support have been instrumental in shaping this report. The Edmond Housing Assessment stands as a testament to our shared dedication to improving the lives of our residents and enhancing the vibrancy of our community." Thank you, guys, for your time.
Thank you very much, ma'am.
One thing I forgot to mention on the education, we are and have partnered, I think you have a council agenda item for a donation that was accepted from the Edmond Board of Realtors in partnering with us on this assessment plan. But we are already moving forward with an education plan, or the Faces of Edmond, as you said, Councilmember Robbins, at our workshop in June, and developing a strategy to educate the public as we move forward with these strategies and tactics. So...
Ready to answer any questions?
Oh, at this time, I'll take any questions. Sorry. I'm like, any questions?
Any questions? Well, I appreciate the effort from the whole committee. Many of us, if you all saw my State of the City speech a couple of days ago on Thursday, you saw the different segments of time that I talked about, 1960, the population, 1980, 2000, 2022, 20, 20, 20, and 2040. And I referenced since the land run, Edmond's population's been growing. And what we've been trying to do here is figure out ways to facilitate that growth. It's, people have moved here for various reasons, and they all have their reasons. And other people are standing at the door to come here. And so we're figuring out ways to help accommodate that and also run our city. Because I have to remind everybody, right now, all we receive are tax dollars to fund our city, unless we go into some type of, take some debt out. And so we're trying to figure out ways to be as creative as possible, because each and every one of you who are sitting in this room today, you want a quality of life that we are working feverishly to maintain for everybody. So Kristi, thank you for the work.
Ma'am, can I ask a point of clarification for you?
Yes.
So being new, and then looking out and seeing many folks that may have been here before, and some haven't before, maybe historically, when reports have come up like this, it had been commissioned by city council, the language that's been utilized is, you know, the council's voting or would adopt, right? This one very specifically says to receive. Could you speak a minute to what sort of that means as far as us receiving it and potential next steps?
So we went on, just, I want to talk terms that I speak all the time, contracting terms. We went under contract with a...
Speak up a little bit.
There we go. That's just my soft voice I have. The, we went under contract, council, to do a housing assessment. We went out competitively and found a company to do that for us. That company has met their requirements that we had, the terms and conditions that we had in the contract. Part of the terms and condition is that they are to produce a report and give it to the city. That's what they're doing. That's what this event here tonight is, for us to receive it. We are completing the terms and conditions of that contract to receive the report. Then council, staff, citizens, we can all start dissecting it to figure out what works here and what doesn't. It doesn't mean that just because we receive it, that it's going to be implemented, or 100, doesn't, doesn't make that determination. This is a contractual report. Let me state it a different way. When you go into the grocery store, there's a, you're creating a contract with the grocery store for them to, you're going to pay them for some foods, some food, foods. When you go in there, you pick your, you get your service, you pay for it, and you receive it. It's the same thing we're doing here. We've paid for it, we're going to pay for it. We need to receive it. And this is the action that we're going to take tonight to receive it. Is that...
Yeah, I think as somebody new, and, you know, like many don't, you know, try to find acronyms in contracting, which, you know, the mayor spent 20, 30-plus years at Tinker and knows that space very well. I think it's important to note that we're not voting or taking action to adopt, we are to receive it. And then, as the mayor said, it's incumbent on all of us to have that robust conversation as a community, what is it that we want to support and adopt and champion or otherwise? Is that, I don't want to put words in your mouth. Is that, would that be fair?
That's it, sir. That's it. And that's all. We're going to allow the opportunity for some citizens to speak. At this time, I'm going to open the floor up for citizens' comment. What, what I... Okay. What I also mentioned before...
Thought somebody was ready.
I know.
Wait. Let me, let me give the instructions first. If you hear, if you hear what you wanted to say repeated several times, we're just saying, we've heard you. We understand that. We're, just like the report we received, we're going to receive your comments. So what I would like for, if you want to speak right now, you raise your hand. I will acknowledge you. You will come on down, and you will introduce yourself, and then you will have your opportunity to speak. Over here on the left-hand side was first, and then the man in orange, yes. And then I'm also going to say, please be very concrete in your words, meaning, let's be as short and brief as possible.
Okay. I'll do the best I can. Actually, I had spent all day trying to come up with what I wanted to say to actually...
Sir, will you please introduce yourself?
Oh, sorry. Robert Siemens. Lived in Edmond for 27 years, mostly at 1821 Courtney Lane. I also serve on the Community Oriented Policing Leadership Council. So I volunteer my time to the city. I've been mostly focused on law enforcement issues in our police department, which is very good. I mean, I think we're, we're tops. It's JD, I get along very well with JD. I think he's a great guy. Anyway, what, what I had intended to do tonight peacefully and as kindly as I know how to be, is to challenge some of the things in this report. You've made me feel a lot better, though, because it sounds like to me we're going to have other opportunities to input about things that we see in this report. We also, on our side, who made dissent from this, need time to deconstruct this thing, look at all the pieces of it, see what we think about the way that they've gone about doing these things. I have concerns because there were programs that seemed to fit this pattern that I'm extremely aware came out of the United Nations under UN Agenda 21 into our federal government, and all, all of the agencies of the executive branch of our government just swallowed this hook, line, and sinker starting in 1993 under Bill Clinton. George Bush actually signed us up to support a lot of these things. Now, there's issues in here. As, now, I saw this last week, too, at the planning meeting, and it's pretty much the same as that presentation. And I could immediately see things, I'm going, wait a minute, 1,700 people? You've surveyed 1,700 people? What percentage of that, or what percentage of that is our population? And we all have huge investments of time, energy, money, mortgages, whatever, to live in this community. And I know I can, I can tell you, I worked my butt off to get here. And, and because as soon as I got to Oklahoma from Texas, sorry, I'm an adoptee of Oklahoma, okay? But I've been here for a long time, so I consider myself an Oklahoman. And I have made a lot of effort to get into Oklahoma, my wife and I both. We worked very hard to get here. You know, you take on a mortgage, you, you know, you do all the stuff you normally do. And so I'm not the only one that has a lot of concerns about those investments, our stock in this place being protected. I totally believe in promoting and protecting our place here, because it's special. It's very special. And I don't want to see anything happen here that could diminish our stock, you know, our investment in this community as individual residents here. Now, just one other quick thing, I'm actually not going to go into some of these things, you know, as, you know, to point out about this study... things, you know, as, you know, to point out about this study right now, because as I'm, I'm hearing you, I hope I'm hearing you correctly, that you're just receiving the study and there will be time for us to input. And let me suggest maybe a town hall, because I don't know that this is the right venue for us to, to, to vent all of our concerns about this, because you're trying to get business done. And this kind of needs to be a single-issue kind of a town hall or something where, where we can all come together and we can go back and forth with you. And I think that would alleviate a lot of the, the bad feelings that have come up, because we feel like sometimes that you're not listening to us. And we feel like we deserve to be listened to. And probably most of what you've experienced is frustration from people who, who are, who are, well, actually, they're terrified that this may wind up creating low-density, low-income, high-density kinds of apartment complexes, and all we have to do is look at OYO, and that's the kind of thing you're going to wind up with. And, and there, so there's, there's a lot of risks here, and I'm not sure that all those risks have been addressed and mitigated, you know, there's mitigation strategies, et cetera. So there, there's just a lot here that we need to study a little more deeply. Now, one, one quick thing, a lot of these issues are completely out of our control, and there's nothing you can do about them. And, and one of those things is that the Federal Reserve kept interest rates so low for so long, and you had people that shouldn't have been granted mortgages that were, and they went out and bought houses like crazy when interest rates were, you know, 2% on a mortgage or 2 and 1/4% on a mortgage or whatever, and that ran the prices up. It's, it, it doesn't necessarily have anything to do with what we're doing in Edmund. Plus, we, we all went through two and a half years of lockdowns, low productivity, businesses closing, and all of that kind of thing. So we reduced productivity, and then what happened? The, the feds dumped gigantic amounts of money into the economy, and that's the textbook definition, definition of inflation. It's too much money chasing too few things. And there's nobody in this room that can do anything about that. So, you know, the, the idea that, I mean, Edmund's market is what Edmund's market is. Edmund has become what it is because it attracts people who have the capacity to, to carry a mortgage, to buy a house. I couldn't afford a $400,000 house. I don't want anybody to come help me to buy a $400,000, $100,000 house. So, you know, this idea of helping people and giving them things only makes them weaker. And I, I really have a problem with that. I, what, what I did in my career is, when I wanted more money, I wanted to advance, I went out and got the skills. You go get another degree. You go find something else to do that does make money. And if you love a particular pursuit and it doesn't pay the money, that's not the fault of the market, that's the fault of the decisions that the individuals make. And I, I think, finally here, I, I think that having any government get involved in a market and start messing around with it or trying to help people or anything like that is a ticket to disaster, really. It just shouldn't be happening. Okay? One, one quick last thing I thought about. Okay, okay, so we're saying we need more affordable housing over here, but over here in that TIF, the city is actually incentivized to support the destruction of the most affordable housing in this city, which is the older parts of the city. The houses are smaller. You know, Edmund, as it was growing, went through this phase of, of smaller houses and more modest situations at the time. And those are the very houses that, I mean, of course, they're not cheap, but those are the houses that are most affordable in our entire town. Okay? So why are we tearing them down and putting two $500,000 houses right there on the same lot? Plus, you're, you're expanding, you're gigantically expanding, I'm talking a factor of five, six, seven, eight, the tax base. And you, you don't control, it's the county that controls the, you know, the, the taxation and so forth, and determining what properties are valued at and so forth. So what's going to happen to all those people in the TIF? Were they surveyed before that happened? Probably not. But there's older couples, there's, there's young families and stuff in a lot of those houses. And they're going to get hammered by taxes. So, you know, it, it, what I was thinking, this sounds like kind of a scam to me, that, that over here, you're telling us we need more affordable houses, and over here, you're destroying affordable houses. So hopefully, we can go through a phase here where we can all honestly interact with each other without all the dissension, and all it takes on your part is just listen, just listen. And I intend to be respectful with anything I'm involved in. So anyway, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. The man down here in orange was next.
Steve Curry, live in Ward Four. I, I will be very brief here. I heard a lot about stakeholders, and, but I didn't hear one of the stakeholders mentioned. And before I get to that, I want to say that I do appreciate what some of these young professionals, the young people have come up here and spoken about. I was there one day. I started out with my family, living in an apartment, then a duplex, then eventually a small home, and then worked my way up. And I'm fortunate, I live in one of those districts that you mentioned up there that's in a higher price tag. But I worked long and hard over many, many years to get there, and my wife as well. We're stakeholders, too. What we can afford for a lot of us that have invested a lot of money in our homes, that's in many cases, the biggest asset we have. We can't afford to have those assets depreciated on us because of what goes on around us. We're stakeholders. We worked hard all of our life to get to where we are and where we live. And we take a lot of pride in where we live. We take a lot of pride, I take a lot of pride living in Edmund. And I'm just asking you that, I'm, like the other gentleman, I'm glad to hear that this is now for review. But don't forget those of us that have worked hard to get to where we are and the values that we've created from working hard. And I hope these young people that follow behind us do the same thing. But I ask you to give due respect and due thought in your diligence about what you're going to do and its impact on us. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ma'am, and...
Yes, my name is Megan Lee Schmidt. I live in Timber Ridge. I've lived in Edmund my entire life, and I, I just, I'd like to say that I don't think that the council and the mayor are the only people that need to listen and need to hear some of the things that some of us younger generation have to say. I, like I said, I'm a lifelong Edmund resident, went to, you know, high school, went to college here. I got my master's degree, my bachelor's, and my master's degree here at UCO. And, you know, then I went off to the military. I went to, you know, I did my service in the Army, and I am now a full 100% total and disabled veteran. And so, you know, here I am with my 100%, you know, disability, but my, my husband is a police officer in Oklahoma City. He was also a veteran, you know? So here we are with, you know, minimal income, living paycheck to paycheck, you know, but we, you know, we were lucky and able to buy a house in Timber Ridge. We wanted to return to where we had grown up. And luckily, you know, after, you know, the housing crash, you know, it, you know, it came back up in 2012, and we were able to purchase the home that we wanted. And I consider us very, very lucky. But I can give you a really prime example. My brother-in-law, my husband's brother, was not as lucky as we were. He was deployed during that time. And, you know, when you're deployed, you're not building credit, you're not building things like that. And it's, it's really hard, when you come back, to almost start from nothing. I mean, it's like starting at, not at zero, but it's, 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 it's just really hard. I mean, if you've never experienced it. And, you know, he came back from this big deployment, got married, and him and his wife, you know, they couldn't live here in Edmund. It just wasn't, it wasn't feasible. And, you know, they, you know, they did not get the chance that we had. And for the, the past five years, they have been living with my husband's parents because they want to stay here and, you know, in the city, close to everyone. And we're talking about, you know, we're talking about a person who, you know, had the same exact background coming up we did. And his wife is, she works in healthcare, like the lady said, you know? And I just, I just think it's a, it's a, I don't want to call it a travesty, but it's so hard for our generation to be placed against, you know, people from the 70s who could work one job and afford, you know, a home here in Edmund. But at the same time, you know, they could raise a family, you know, of two kids and a wife, you know? But now, you, you pitch that against us, you know, our generation, and there's, there's no way that that's achievable. It's, it's just not. And the work that this committee did, and like the ladies were speaking of, you know, it's, all we want is the same, all we want is the same chance, you know? No one's, no one's saying that, you know, we want to bring down Edmund. We don't want to make things more difficult. We don't want to take, you know, what people have worked all their lives for. We don't want that to, you know, we don't want to take what you've worked your whole life for and make it, you know? I don't know. I, I, I'm struggling to come up with an analogy here, you know, without, like you said, not speaking to you guys and speaking to someone else here. But I just, I just think it's, it's, you know, it's really hard when you put the different, you know, generations side by side. It's just not something that's achievable, you know? And I just, I just think that some people need to keep that in mind. And, you know, all the work that they've done on this, it's just outstanding, because we need all these different levels. People need to have access to apartments, to condos, to all these different things, because, I mean, it's just, all the different, you know, things that are, you know, life doesn't look the same as it did in the 70s. You know, you have single parents, you have blended families, you have people who live with their, you know, grandparents, who live with, you know, a multitude of family members. And it's just not the same mom, dad, son, daughter in, you know, a house like it used to be. And I think that, you know, as times change, it's important that people realize that, you know, life looks different now. And, you know, we need to kind of roll with that and, you know, advance as we go along. So I just, I, I think that everyone should try and keep that in mind, so.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Sir, over here.
My wife called. Good evening. My name is Caleb McHale, 2208 Summer Haven Way here in Edmund. I've been a builder and a developer here in town since the 80s. I've built a lot of neighborhoods. I've built a lot of homes. I would like for some of these people that are standing up and saying, we've worked hard, we've worked long, to come out and work an open house with us some weekend. The Parade of Homes brings in hundreds and hundreds of people, right? Nurses, teachers, they can't afford to live here. It's sad, right? We've got to do something about affordability. This isn't about giveaways. I think a lot of people think it's about giveaways. It's not. Excuse me if I sound nervous. I'm very passionate about this. The "we're here, you can't come in" attitude has got to stop. When 75% of your workforce can't live in the town they work in, that's a sad statement. So all I ask for is an open mind. This is not being voted on tonight. Just have an open mind. How about different ideas? I'm in lots of national association of home builder committees, and there's programs out there, many, many programs out there. They're not grants, they're not giveaways, but it's to get people to be able to live where they work. And that's all that I'm asking, is keep an open mind. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is anyone else? Okay, hold on. I'm going to get you, you, then you. Then we're going to go to the back.
Do you want me to go first?
Go ahead.
All right. Lydia Lee, I'm here on behalf of the Edmund Neighborhood Alliance. I was one of the individuals that was quoted in the survey that got interviewed in one of the original focus groups, although it was a Zoom call, and I was the only one that showed up, so I don't know if it, if that can be called a focus group. It was a focus call. But had a very, very good conversation with the, the folks who did this survey. There is absolutely a need for affordable housing in the city of Edmund. That's, that's, wasn't a surprise to me a year and a half ago. It's not a surprise as a result of, of this survey. The only thing I want to say is, as, as all of you know, I have participated in three referendum petitions regarding apartments in the city of Edmund. And so people look at me and go, oh, you're anti-apartment. There is nothing farther from the truth than, than to say that. I absolutely believe in apartments. I believe that that is a necessary and acceptable location for newcomers, for midlife people who are on their own, who want to live in Edmund, want to live close to their jobs. That is absolutely an appropriate housing source. The thing that I would caution you about is considering the location for these. That is why so many of these apartment complexes, people get up in arms and, and object to them, because you sit them down, not you, but, but the projects, set them down in, in the middle of an established, single-family community, and people get upset. They say, oh, my gosh, no, not, not in my backyard. I had a beautiful backyard, now I've got a three-story apartment complex being proposed. It's all about location and consistency with the surrounding neighborhood. And that's what I think is important for this council to focus on going forward with this survey, is look at how it's consistent with the surrounding community. And you're not going to have the objections. You're not going to have the neighborhood that backs up to that, doing the referendums and out protesting and, and doing all that. So please consider location and consistency when you're looking at this housing study going forward. I applaud you for doing this. I think it's a great idea. I think it can be very productive in the city of Edmund. I'm not one of those that says, hey, I got mine, so nobody else gets theirs. But I do agree with one of the statements that was made, where the individual talked about all of these single-family homes that are affordable in the city of Edmund, being bought up, mowed down, and giant condos being put on them, that no one can afford. And that's happening. I drive around downtown and see it every day. So I would caution you on that. When you talk about affordable housing, be careful and not take away the existing affordable housing from individuals who need it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Sir, you're next, and you?
Good evening. My name's Todd McKinnis. I live at 154 Evermay Drive, and my law firm's at 1503 East 19th Street in Edmund. And I'm here in front of you a lot on behalf of different clients, and I'm here tonight on behalf of a group that we recently formed called Edmund Alliance 2050. called Edmund Alliance 2050. And it's a new organization, but it's made up of over fifty businessmen and women who are some of the largest capital investors and nonprofit supporters in the history of Edmund, when you look at that concentrated group. And our mission is to collaborate and support good policies and good government and good visioning for the city of Edmund. And so, I'm here just to say thank you, because this is long overdue, much needed. And as already was stated, the results were not surprising. I mean, I've been in front of you. I've had a project approved and then defeated by referendums because they were on I-35, which was an odd place for a neighborhood to be. And I've also been in front of you, asking for your support. But here's what we're here to talk about tonight. I think it's not about the past. It's not about whether or not someone can be privileged to live into Edmund as a resident or a student. It's about sustainability of our community. And when I look around and I think, "Well, I worked hard and I bought a house here, and so someone else needs to suck it up and do it," and at the same time, the, there's been 2,000 jobs developed on I-35 in the last seven years, and we haven't approved a multifamily project in ten, it tells you that it's not sustainable. And at Planning Commission, I heard somebody come up and say, "Hey, the idea that someone can't live in our city limits, they can just drive in." And so, the question is, well, what kind of community involvement does a policeman, or a fireman, or a nurse that lives outside our city limits compared to those that live here and support their town by their residency here? And so, what I really wanted to say is, the idea is that it's not just a privilege issue, although that's been discussed, and our past is ugly about that. And I hope that's not our future. And so, when I look at our time, I look at what we can do as our organization, and we're happy to do it, and I think we've communicated that to you individually and collectively, to support the implementation of things that make sense. Nobody does a policy or program like this and adopts everything. They take the collective mindset of the group and figure out what's best. Not everything fits Edmund. Not everything fits Highland Park, or Nichols Hills, or Bethany, or any other place. But I do know what we're going to do. We're going to stand beside you. And we're going to come alongside Randy Entz, and when he comes up with the Edmund zoning code that he thinks makes sense, we're going to be part of the process and part of the solution. And people that come up and say no and don't offer a solution are worthless. They provide no value to the future. And so, I hope you'll find that to be not us, that you can hold me personally accountable and our organization when we say, "We will be part of the collaborative solution," whether it's with the Edmund Neighborhood Alliance, or with the Edmund Chamber, or whoever that is, that we will be at the table supporting the future of Edmund. And it doesn't matter how long you've lived here.
There's no, there's no back and forth.
It matters how long you're going to be here and what you're doing to invest in the future, the sustainability of Edmund. And tonight's not about whether or not multifamily's good or bad, or duplexes are good or bad. It's not about economic theory. It's about what are we going to do to sustain Edmund's future going forward. And I believe this is a wonderful step, and our organization believes we'll be here for the future implementation of it as long as it's good policy and good government and good visioning going forward. And with that, we're thankful to be a, a party at the table, and we look forward to working with you going forward. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
You're next.
Good evening. Anthony Tompkins, Windmill One. And I just wanted to reiterate what councillor and another person were saying about how the community needs to grow, and definitely getting in the location of where things need to go is certainly of importance. But again, to this discussion about generations, when my parents bought their first home that I was raised in, it was eighteen thousand dollars. That was in 1970. My first home was fifty-seven thousand dollars. I had a seven-and-a-quarter percent interest rate. So, when I hear people complaining about four and a half or five right now, I just kind of chuckle, you know. The house I live in currently was purchased for a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. It's a beautiful home. I'm happy to live in it. I inherited it because my mother, well, I won't go into that, but she's no longer with us. In any case, there's no way I could have afforded that, working for nineteen years at UCO. So, I think that it is important, and you all are doing the right thing to get this type of housing available. It is not a handout to give somebody an opportunity to move into an apartment. I don't know where that comes from. We're not Russia. We're not, we're not picking up all that stuff. We're literally trying to improve our community. And I thank you all for everything you're doing, and I thank the Alliance as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. You, sir, then you, ma'am. So, if you're starting to hear a theme here, we can.
We've got a car before the horse going on right here, folks.
Sir, will you please introduce yourself?
I said, "We got a car going before the horse right here."
Sir, will you please introduce yourself?
Oh, sir, Leonard Scott. We, we got to talk about priorities first. We understand all the stuff going on, but man, when you sit at the kitchen table, you've got money in front of you. You got what you, what you've got. You all want to make money because you have to to pay your, you get, get your money from taxes. We understand that. You're trying to bring people in. I got that. I'm going to speak for the children tonight, because our children, now you're, this thing, we're talking seven, eight years. How long does it take to plan a, a high school? We've got a high school we need right now, some other schools because of our population. And what they're talking about bringing in here, we're two, we're, we're ten, fifteen years of planning out for more high schools, grade schools, middle schools. We can't even afford police officers assigned to sixteen of our elementary schools right now. And that's sad. And so, if we can't protect our children and can't educate our children based on funds, then what are we talking about? We have to have the priorities. When, when we talk about this, put this over here in Monopoly game area, all of this stuff. We need to take care of what's happening right now. Our roads are bad. Our infrastructure is horrible right now because we can't support the schools. We can't, we can't drive. Just drive down a road when school starts and see the cars backed up and lined up to let kids out. It's ridiculous, and it's a safety issue. So, let's go back to the priorities. What is the number one priority? It should be, you all have your priorities to make money, and safety, secure the population. We get that, and we, we appreciate that. But my priority right now is children. And the other thing is, in this report that they handed out, you know there's not a focus group, group on elders. Everybody in there was in the thirties, twenties, thirties, talking about this, and the focus group did not have one focus group with elders, because we're affected by this. Remember those downsides they talk about? "Oh, we got to get them out of the house because they're trying to down..." That's us. That's us. So, we want a priority on elders and our children. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ma'am, you.
My name is April Wolf, and I've been a citizen here in Edmund for just two years. So, I just want to bring up a couple of points because my husband works as a manager for a poll company, and I am a stay-at-home mom. We tried to get into Edmund eight years ago, couldn't get in because we didn't understand that it's cost more to get a house here. Two years ago, I wanted to be here so bad for the school specifically. So, we wound up selling a car so that we could pay that extra money, and I wound up spending like thirteen thousand dollars more than the house was worth. Now, I live in that, the largest green circle on that screen. So, we did make that happen. But should that have been the case? I don't think so. So, I agree that there definitely is an issue. However, location, please think about location and where you're allowing this to happen, because my green belt behind my house just sold, and I'm terrified of that because of this affordable housing does need to be affordable for people like the middle class. But how? I've never seen a government program do that. Not state, not local, not, not federal. It's only below a certain income, and I've never fallen into that group. So, that's why we decided to sell a car to get into a city with the kind of schools we want. Now, the location comes back because of the schools. So, if my green belt got sold, right, so if they put affordable housing of some kind on that, now you're overloading the schools in my area. I came here for the schools. So, what's the plan on expansion for schools? So, location matters because when green belts are sold, you're, you're affecting the schools right in that area, and they're maxed out. Like the gentleman before me said, the lines are an issue at my school in particular. But that just means our schools are maxed out. So, the locations are so important on this issue, and the affordability for who? What, what, who? The young people talking, "You have jobs." So, who? I mean, sell a car. You can come here. I'm proof of that. I just wanted to bring those things up because there are issues. And clearly, I'm not a nurse. I'm a stay-at-home mom, and I made it here. Thank you.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Hold on. There was, yeah, the you, okay, let's do this. You, lady in blue, then, hold on. Yo, pink, then black. We're, we're getting to a theme here.
I'll change the theme. My name is Chris Sperry. I was a member of the stewing committee. And I just want to make a comment that the real issue here, the bottom line issue, the people that need to afford it are those who are living in apartments now and spend fifty percent of their income just to stay in that apartment. They don't have a car. They ride the bus.
Address us, ma'am.
They're the ones that we need affordable housing for so that they don't spend fifty percent of their income. And I think the bottom line issue is that we are talking about people, and people who just want to make a better life for themselves, and we should provide an opportunity for them to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Julie Dallinger. I've lived here in Edmund quite a number of years. My daughter grew up here, and we've enjoyed Edmund a lot. I feel cut, I feel compelled to speak because there's so much, there is so much that I've seen in the last two months of becoming acquainted with this housing, affordable housing assessment. And people are talking about, "Hey, if we can just work on maybe, you know, giving some room between this area and that area in different projects." But when you look at the 2018 plan, when you look at the 2030 plan, when you look at the 2050 plan, all of that, you just have to bring together and say, "Okay, we're talking high density. We're talking high density. The Planning Commission right now is talking about rail, bringing rail here. We know that Edmund's growing, but it doesn't mean that everyone who wants to be here can afford to be here. I may want to live somewhere else, and I can't afford to live necessarily in Montecito, California. I'm living here. I don't expect Montecito to say, 'Julie, we're going to let you live in Montecito.'" So, I feel compelled to come forward because there's really a lack of communication. And even though there are so many websites, there are so many platforms out there giving information about all of this, it's gotten really confusing to people. And I'm one of those people that didn't know any of this was going on until the Zoom meeting. So, what I will tell you is the direction of the city, what the communication and transparency has a problem. And I'm going to back that up by mentioning the letter from the former mayor's to the council, or I should say, rather, to the mayor and city manager. And I will mention the podcast by people who have to do with the city. And that was in July, Edmund Way. We have a podcast. So, there's a lack of communication, they say, within the city. So, it's not just me. So, I'll let you know that I think it's unconscionable to think that an out-of-state group that was clearly brought here to showcase their ideas, their choices, to bring to Edmund is wrong. One can simply go to Development Strategies webpage, okay, website, and see where they're coming from. When I, when I found out what was going on, and I happened to go on the Zoom call on the 28th of June, I immediately was just flabbergasted. And I don't know how many of you actually listened to it, but the way they, the way it was done with the five-screen, and then you could ask questions and make comments, everyone was separated out, which is a great psychological tactic, because you don't know who else might feel the same way you do. I was marginalized by the group, and the people couldn't answer the questions. They just couldn't. Development Strategies, they reached out to about two percent of the people in Edmund, and you guys are acting like, and I know it's a presentation, so you're, you're receiving this, but from what I've seen of the meetings in the last two months, it just seems like it's a fait accompli. But now, we're being told, "Well, this is just, this is just bringing it to you, to, to the council, to mull it over." So, you've got the sticky notes at the farmer's market and a herd-on-herd. You reach out to about two percent of the people. I won't go into the details. I've got so many details, I didn't know where to begin to even come up here, because it's just maddening. But Edmund needs to be governed locally. And when you start bringing in forces that have preconceived ideas of what we want in a city, or what they want in the city, that's not good. That's not good for any of us. And in the end, what I can see is high taxes, high taxes, high density over time. We're going to have the rail probably, unless it's voted down in about twelve to fourteen months, okay? I mean, we're talking about that. We're talking about getting more police and fire because we're talking about higher density in our housing. We're talking about bringing in workforce. Why do we need to educate workforce people? And if you don't know that particular vocabulary word, then figure out exactly who they're talking about. Ms. Patterson said that, that it has been determined that there will be negative side effects in Edmund if we don't pass this plan. That is the opposite, actually, of what Andy Feister said on the 26th. So, I've been looking at meetings. People have put things out on social media. Next door, they take your stuff off. Facebook, they take off anything you write. So, if you disagree with the city, or disagree with the people who are pushing this for the city, you're marginalized. And that's how I think ninety-eight percent of the people, if they knew this was going on, they would feel the same way. Two percent of Edmundites, in fact, ninety-four percent of one of the surveys, if I can call it a survey, was Edmundites. So, it's not even all the people in Edmund. So, I'm just coming up here saying that I know prices are high. I know it's hard for people to afford housing when you're young. But nobody ever gave me an opportunity from a city. People can laugh. People can laugh.
Nobody's laughing.
No.
Well, I assure you.
No, women, no, no, no. Then, we're not going to have that.
We're not laughing.
Are we going to stop this part of the public comment? Go ahead, ma'am.
Thank you. So, it, it takes a lot to buy a home. And we do have circumstances from COVID, and because of the interest rates, and because a lot of people want to move here. They want to move here because we were on so many good They want to move here because we were on so many good lists about 10 years ago on being a great place to live. And I said, because everywhere I've lived, it's the kiss of death. As soon as you get on a best list, within 10 years, your city changes. So I, that's all I have to say. But I, I really hope that governing Edmund will be done on a local basis. We don't need to bring in all of this other stuff. And I won't go into details. I can. I might do that in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mayor.
Hold on, just before you say, we have two more people. If, if you don't have anything different to say, we've heard you. I said we had two more people. You're, it's you and the, and the Fuchsia?
Sure. Mayor, council. My name is Daniella Duel, and I'm a constituent in Ward Three. I've lived in Oklahoma for the past two years, relocating from Albuquerque, New Mexico for my job. And I've lived in Edmund since February. Since my time here in Oklahoma, however, because my job is here in Edmund, I have been involved with Edmund Young Professionals. And one of the things that I would like you all to know is that there is a group of passionate young people, some of us single, some of us single parents, some of us married, who are all employed here gainfully, working hard at the top of our game, well-educated, have many certifications and qualifications. And we care deeply about this city. We care deeply about the children here that are not our own. We care deeply about seniors that are not our grandparents. And we care deeply about those of us in our community who are not as privileged, regardless of what that privilege may or may not look like. And I would like you to know that there are a group of us who want to get involved. We'd love to be seen as part of the solution and not the problem. I understand that my generation has given us a bad rap. And yes, there are some where I would say, sit down. You are not the best example. But there are a significant group of us that want to be the future of Edmund. We are here. We are passionate, and we would love the opportunity to come to the table with our fellow citizens of all backgrounds and all ages and have a conversation. We want to be a part of the conversation and a part of the solution and would love to be heard and would love to listen because we care. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I'm going to call this, you're the last one. You're the last speaker. You, ma'am.
Oh, okay. Connie Thayer. I just want to speak to information, various bits of information that were in the presentation. And here the Housing Needs Assessment, Concerns Raised by Major Employers, Edmund Public Schools, and Other Others About Workforce Issues Related to Lack of Housing. I mean, these, these people, these are not the, the largest part of community. We, Edmund is a bedroom community. We come here because we want our privacy. We want our single-family homes. And we, the government should not be concerned with who can come and live in this community. We shouldn't be setting up funding to bring people in this community. Our country is, runs on the free market. It's, we're not a socialist communist society that our government would shape our community according to what they want, according to what their funding needs are. Because that is, is, you just spoke of it earlier. Edmund housing is unattainable for most, 64%. I, I came to Edmund. I didn't live in Edmund proper when I first came. I lived in an apartment. And then I moved into a house, bought a house, and it still wasn't Edmund proper. And then later on, I was able to move inside Edmund proper. As you progress, so is your ability to live in a certain place. That's a free society. That is what we are. We're not a socialist society where the government gives us capabilities to live in a certain area because they want to change our community, change that community. The city's population is changing, yes. But the city has a bedroom community. What we know and what we come here for is not. We still want that. That's why we're here. That's why we came here. Okay, the housing market is creating challenges for employers. I mean, it is not your job to take care of the employers. It is your job to represent the will of the people and to ensure our freedoms are being upheld. Okay, on, you have a few charts here. It shows about Edmund's economy growing and based on the projected job growth rate, that people won't be able to live here. 75% of workers live outside of the city. I mean, that's okay. Eventually, they'll get here, just like everybody else that has spoke before me has said. And I noticed on the bottom of these charts, it says Oklahoma City and Edmund are, I mean, it says, the source of this information is OESC Occupational Growth, 2018 to 2018 for Oklahoma City. Oklahoma Employment Security Commission. Over, over and over in this report, it talks about how we are different. We're different than Oklahoma City. We're different than everywhere else in the country. If that's so, why are you making a presentation using information that is from Oklahoma City and not from Edmund? You, you put a couple maps up here showing households under poverty and median home value. In communities all over, it is well-known that the central part of your community has lesser home value in it. And the farther you go out, the bigger the properties are, the more the properties cost. Those are normal things. That's not a, a big new thing, and it should not be a concern that you guys have to address. You guys aren't the social engineers of our community. You're the representatives of our will, and you are to ensure that we are able to abide freely. Okay, you got, you have goals to me. Increase housing supply, yes, that's your job. We're happy for you to, to do that, but we are not happy for you to change the makeup of our community in order to be able to do so. You have on here improved conditions of older homes, housing stock while preserving affordability. And somebody spoke about somebody making code. We do not want our government to tell us how we have to upgrade our home and enforcing us to make changes without us having an input. And we shouldn't have to make changes according to what you guys want to do. There is a base standard, yes, we should adhere to. But we shouldn't be forcing people and having to come up with programs to fund for people to be able to upgrade their homes according to these new codes that you guys want to implement. Okay, you have tactics that you have listed. Ensure new zoning codes allow for more housing diversity. Okay, you have on here also to do this stuff, that you have to get funding. You're going to maximize funding. You're going to use entitlement funding, 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 funding. And you want to hire more people and blow government that are bigger than it already is. It is not your guys' job to ensure a certain makeup of our community. That is a free market principle that will be, naturally will occur according to people's income and household and their desire and will to live somewhere and do what it takes to be able to live there. This, and you have one to three, all the way up to seven-plus years. So you, you want to do all of these things, and it's going to be ongoing. Who knows how long? And lastly, I just want to say, you, you guys say that you're doing this for people, you know, lesser people. People can't afford to live here. They can't afford to come here, all this, that, and the other. I, like the other lady that spoke, am disabled. I have a very limited income. I live in a house here in Edmund. I don't even live in an apartment. I live in a house. I find a way to be in this community because I love this community. I came to this community for what it had to offer my children, like many people do. I don't want this community to be changed by the government because they want to get some funding. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We all appreciate all of the comments. As I said earlier, all we're doing is receiving the report. Of course, we're going to do additional analysis because we have to see what is possible, what's not possible. But we, as I said, we appreciate your comments. I'm going to close this part of the public comment. Yes, did you?
No, go ahead. Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
Oh, I'm just.
I, I just, I, I feel like we may want to make a comment or two.
I was going to, I was going to ask, but I was, I was just closing the part of the public comment. We're going to end with council to see if council wanted to say anything on this. So then we can proceed with the, yes.
I, no, I don't, I need a minute. I need a minute.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. You know, Councilman Robbins, he and I went out to the Edmund Young Professionals Organization the other morning to speak. Ms. Whitehead had us out there. And I think you asked how many, I don't know, there's 30 or 40 in the room. How many of you live here in Edmund? Half a dozen hands went up. What? That kind of surprised me. I, I've heard what people have said tonight. One, one, one of the speakers indicated that we don't listen. I have listened. I've listened to every word. And every one word, every one words have value. And your, your opinions are important to me. I want to tell you a story. My mother raised six kids by herself in a house. The mortgage payment was $54 a month. She sold hamburgers for 35 cents. We got food from the county, peanut butter, cheese, to keep our bellies full. And that house payment was $54 a month. Hell, I bet four or five of us could have pushed it over if we had to. That was our home. And she took care of it the best she could. And so when people say affordable housing, I don't actually know what that means. I know that people try to do what they can to put a roof over their head. And if, if it's the best they can do to live in a $54 a month house, that's the best they can do. Fast forward 2023. My wife and I, we live in East Edmund. We're lucky. We got a great run. She and I take care of each other. We worked hard. Shazam, things are different. That house is worth more than $54 a month. That doesn't mean that where my mother raised six kids by herself is any less. And I hear people say, we worked hard to get in there. She worked hard to put that roof over our house or over our heads. She worked hard to see that we were fed and had one pair of jeans to work in and one pair of jeans to go to school in. That's what we had, and we were happy to have it. I want people to succeed. I want people to have what they want. They can work hard and live in a 1.5, 2.5 million dollar house. That's great. Spend your money on a house. If all you can afford is a $140,000 house, that doesn't make you less human than someone that lives in a 2.5 million dollar house. We've got to figure this out. I don't know what the hell the United Nations has to do with my house. Maybe it does. I don't know. I'll find out. But let's look at this, if we can, as a community. We've got to figure out a way to where Citizen Scott and myself, we don't bicker at each other. I mean, I kind of like bickering at him, but I, I don't want that to happen on every issue. So tonight, what we've heard is a report. I don't know. I put it in my briefcase. I got tired of reading it. I mean, we've heard it and heard it and heard it. We can take the best out of it. We can leave some of it behind. We can, for all that matter, we can stick the whole thing in the shredder if we choose to. But we need to look at it as a community. And I, for those that have done well in life and enjoy what they have in Edmund, I'm happy for them. I applaud you for your success. For those that want to move here, those young professionals I saw the other day at the Chamber of Commerce, who want to live here, I want them to live here. They're bright. They're hard workers. They care about things. I want them to be here. So let's all take a pause and take a deep breath and breathe through our noses, and we will eventually get to a solution on housing. So let's try to work through this and see if we can't come to something that we can all shake hands on and be happy about. Thank you.
I appreciate your comments, Councilman Moore. There were a lot of comments tonight saying what this Housing Needs Assessment was that it is not. There was out and out misinformation about our motives. There's no motive here other than to make Edmund a great community, right? That's why, as I've said, we're up here spending hours and hours and hours and making next to nothing because we love this community. We are not here with an agenda. We, this organization is not trying to force ideas. They're an objective, professional organization that assesses housing needs. They're not here to shove cheap housing down your throats. There are no government handout programs in this. So again, the listen part, I've been pointed, fingered at and told me to listen. I've listened to everyone said tonight. I read every email, and I'll continue to do that. But do not accuse us of things that are just not true. There is, there was so much said tonight that was frankly embarrassing, disgusting. I would love to have you as my neighbor. And your house was cheap, right? But they're good people. And so this idea that people who pay less for their home, or God forbid, rent, are not good people and not good neighbors is gross. And it's embarrassing, and it's got to stop. So don't say it to me because I am not listening to that. All right? So communication goes two ways. And we are trying desperately to be transparent, to communicate. Part of Kristy Batterson's presentation today was not, I, I mean, everyone doesn't go to herd on herd. Everyone doesn't do this. Everyone doesn't do that. But the idea was, how can we reach as many residents as possible to get their input? We wanted more input. I'd love to have had more than 1,700 people on a survey. But from what I understand about surveys, that's pretty good. And it's probably a good cross sampling of folks in the community. So we will continue to try to communicate. We will continue to put things on social media. We will continue to do things at farmer's markets. But there is no crazy conspiracy agenda. I'm not, nobody's trying to do anything other than make this a great community. And back to sustainability. If we continue to have 75% of the people who work in this city not be able to live here, we're not going to have people who work here anymore. And the people who say, oh, they'll drive an hour and a half. No, they're not going to drive an hour and a half. They're going to take a job closer to where they can afford to live. And so we're also not going to crowd our schools. A lot of the housing needs are not people with kids. Again, there's just so much here that is just not right and not accurate. And continuing this misinformation about people who rent or people who, you know, this misinformation about people who rent or people who, you know, a single young professional should be able to own a car and still live in the community where they work, right? It is all of our responsibility, but the people who come up here and say, I lived in an apartment, and then a duplex, and then a small home, and a bigger home, and they were able to afford those. The mayor in his state-of-the-city address came to here because of the safety of this city and to raise his kids in great schools, and that's still why people want to come here and live, right? But he was a GS9?
When I moved here, yes.
He was a GS9 when he moved here. He can't, a GS9 can't afford to live in Edmund right now, right? But that, the, the main, I, I go back to sustainability. We're here to do what's best for our city, and if in 30 years, no one's here to work and to serve you and to work in the hospitals and to do all of these things, then we haven't done our job. And so asking a professional, reputable organization to come in and objectively assess our needs and maybe tell you things that you don't really want to hear, or suggest ideas that you don't like, that's what doing our job looks like. And so I, I just almost couldn't stand here and listen to people accusing us of things. We're here to serve our city. You want people to run for these positions? Quit accusing us of having some horrible agenda. I, I, I'm not making any sense anymore, so I'm just, I'm, I'm disgusted. So this is a great report, I appreciate Kristi Battersen's work and the other team members, the residents who participated, the people who volunteered in the focus group, the steering committee. I think it's a really, really good report with really good information that we're going to take seriously and continue to have conversations about and listen to you. But just stop for a minute and listen to what some of you people said today, and I'll get the emails about how I mean. Go ahead. It's not the first time.
Thank you very much. Anything else from the Council?
I was going to, I was going to make a, a comment, Mayor. I think sometimes when we deal in democracy, we view friction as a flaw. It's actually a feature. It's one that those who designed the system knew very well, but somehow they entrusted that a group of citizens would be able to come together and solve problems. And our community has been around for some time, and a lot of its history has been steeped in housing. And what does that look like? And who do we allow to live here and why? And so as we look to the future, for me, it's what are the sort of guiding principles? One is that I want us to be collaborative as a stakeholder. If we all agreed, that would be creepy, to be honest, it would be weird. So I welcome people that have strong opinions. And my prayer, I hope we always look to see and try to feel empathy for shoes that we haven't particularly walked in, but I understand and recognize that there's people with different perspectives. Anticipating this meeting, today I took a little bit of time in between work and drove around my district, which happens to be Ward One. And Ward One probably has a little bit of all, of all of this going on in a big and significant way. As I saw, we have manufactured or mobile homes, we have town homes, we have apartment complexes across my street, where I lived in Timber Ridge and now live in Old Town. We have Section Eight rolling, rolling greens. We have different schools and different developments, we have significant things and investments happening downtown at a, at a rapid, at a rapid pace. I stopped and reflected at the Three Brothers statue. If you haven't seen it, it's, it's brand new, and it speaks to this history that we have in Edmund. And I'm a history major, facts are facts, just what it is, but as we look at our history in, in Edmund, we very much decided who and where and what we wanted living here. And with intent, community leaders came together and decided, you know, we want a place where people can have a community and live their values that would exclude other people of other, of other groups or other colors, and we did that. And so it wasn't until 1973 until we had an African-American family purchase residential property in the city of Edmund. So we have a very interesting history when it comes to housing and our ordinances and the conversation that we have. But I'm excited because I think we have a group of people that want to figure out what's next, and so what does that look like? One of the projects in my district that I drove through today is Pivot. It's off frets. It's a beautiful community with one-car garages that in order to be able to purchase a home there, and I met with the executive director, that individual needs to go through credit counseling. They go through Dave, Dave Ramsey, which I go in and out of how close they are, my wife and I, I liked, anyway. But for those who have gone through that, it requires 200 hours of community service and allows 100 of those hours to be collaborative with friends and neighbors. It brings people in. When that home, and I'll be going to one on Sunday, the keys are brought, there's an agreement as far as upkeep and stuff, and they refer to it as a home blessing, because I truly believe it blesses the community. The executive director talked to me about a member of the military who lives there and, and everything. And so there's a place and a space for what we need, as long as we're able to see friction, I believe, as a feature, not a flaw, and we're able to be willing to look from a different point of view, even though we don't adopt it. And with intention, I put receive the report, not adopt the report, because it's time for us to have that conversation. We might not arrive at the same destination that all of us want to, but we can definitely have a conversation of what does it look like? Here's a couple lenses that I have in conversations that I've had. Number one, is I ask people in my district and people that I talk to in the community, do we want to be a community where people serve us, put their life on the line, and then live somewhere else? That's a real decision that actually has to be made in principle when it comes to policy in and around housing. For example, my sister and, and her husband, they live in Mountain View, California, where Google is, and there's an expectation that people come and take care of mom as a nurse, or protect the citizens as a police officer or a fireman, and then there is no place in that community, any way, shape, or form, that that public servant or that teacher or anyone can live in that community. They serve that community and they leave that community. So that's question number one, is, you know, always interested in asking people, do you want us to be a community that where people serve us and then leave us, or serve us and then stay? The next question I have typically for people is, after those kids that you've invested and that you've frustrated you to tears and that you love and hate and have all these types of emotions around, after you send them to UCO or Oklahoma State or OU or anywhere else, do you eventually want them to come back, that investment to come back and live in Edmund? And sometimes I just jump and I say, okay, kids, I don't know about that, but what about the grandkids, right? If that happens? And so that's another consideration. Do we want to be a community that has places? Because they could live in Shawnee, Yukon, other, other places. So my district, I think, is steeped in history, steeped in policies that shaped how and who and why we welcome people. It also is representative of pretty much every type of housing that you can imagine that exists within the city of Edmund, and it also has people that are very eager to develop things. My question is, will you be part of the conversation? I actually don't want the city to form a housing task force. I want people that are interested to form the housing task force and have the city participate, because I think that changes who has ownership. If it's the city, then it's us dictating in some way. And by the way, sometimes it'd be like, oh, you developers, I own one home and I have this really neat agreement with my bank, if I keep making monthly payments, they'll let me stay there. So that's me as far as my property investments in this city. As a citizen who loves our community, as all of us do, and serves our community, let's have that conversation. So I would, I would say a, a task force that's made up of people that are interested, who will come to ever, come together over coffee, which there's a lot of great places in Ward One, by the way, and then have that conversation, and then we're a part of it. I think we're doing that with mental health, we're doing that with some other homelessness and other things, where, yeah, the city could take the lead, but then again, then it's not our solution. And so I'm looking forward to the conversation. I sort of like challenging and difficult, difficult problems to tackle, and I believe in the character and our community is such that we'll find, not all the perfect solutions, but we'll find solutions enough that will provide a, an opportunity to make Edmund, Oklahoma, the best place to live and raise a family.